Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk. I hereby direct you to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, December 20, 2021, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Central Avenue Corridor Streetscape Master Plan.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for December 20, 2021. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Buell.
Here.
Council members Kavanaugh.
Here.
Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Jill Connors.
Thanks, Adrian. Good evening. This is Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. We're here tonight. I'm here along with Ryan Peterson from RDG, and it's to present you with some information that we've brought to work sessions before. Some of the current council members were not on council at the time, and so we thought this was a good refresh, as well as an opportunity to get your current input as to whether we need to make any changes to the draft before bringing to the City Council at a meeting for approval and adoption. Real quickly, this work started in 2018 when RDG was selected as a consultant to undertake Streetscape Master Plan public engagement opportunity. And they worked for the course of about a year. In 2019, then, this information was brought to the City Council. Some questions came up about one-way and two-way traffic and how that might affect the corridor. And so because we didn't have a final traffic study that would give us adequate information in order to make that determination, we decided to postpone getting the plan adopted until we had the opportunity to conduct a proper traffic study. So we're back here tonight to get your input and to see whether, you know, you have any more questions before we proceed with requesting your adoption at a future council meeting in order to help us then conduct some implementation of the vision that's presented in this master plan. I'm going to turn it over now to Ryan Peterson from RDG, who's going to present you with the information that was gleaned during the planning process. Ryan?
Well, thank you, Jill, and good evening. As you know, my name is Ryan Peterson with RDG Planning and Design, and it's been a privilege to work with the city on this project. And just a few acknowledgements. We are partnered with WHKS Engineers, and there was a steering committee that helped guide this project, and you can see those individuals' names here on the screen. Keep in mind, as Jill mentioned, that this started in 2018, and in earnest, went for about 12 months, and ultimately, there's been some momentum, and you've made some of the things you've done within the community. The Southwest Art Area is now open, was not open when we did this project, and so it's one of the key things and reasons why we're coming back. This was a project that ultimately had a lot of input from the Washington neighborhood. That was a very important aspect of this, and you'll see that we spent quite a bit of time studying the project area within the framework of the Washington Neighborhood Plan. That was a project the city did prior to this. We took those principles and used them to help guide the decisions that we're making, that we are suggesting within this project here. The study area is from 22nd Street to 11th Street, and you can see it runs those 11 city blocks this way. This outline here is the limits of the Washington Neighborhood, and so you can see how it kind of overlays. We don't need to go back and review all of the timeline, but effectively, we did have -- I just want to call your attention to two key things. We had a public input session to kick this project off, and that was solely about input. It wasn't our ideas, and it wasn't, here's your solution, and you react to our solution. We did have a visual listening exercise where we were able to gauge the level of design, the level of creativity, the experience. So we got feedback on that. And then we came back and had a second public input meeting, which was -- so the first one was the "Central Event" is what we called it, and that was in September. And then the second one was the Spring Fling, where we were at the Multifamily Center on Central Avenue. And that was important to us, is to have both of these public input events in the corridor, ultimately getting feedback from those people that live, work, and are in this area. And so the public input strategy was very robust. We did -- some of our team members went door-to-door handing out flyers to make sure people knew that this project was taking place. That was a big part of it. Secondly, we did issue a number of press releases with your office here, and then ultimately made sure through social media that we kind of took a second approach to double down. There was newspaper advertisements. We had signage placed along the street to notify, you know, vehicles or people in the vehicles that there was going to be an event coming on. And then lastly, our tweet boxes, which are basically a drop box where people can respond to a question literally on the sidewalk in front of an area within the corridor. And so it was a multi-pronged approach. It was robust, and it kind of also, coupled with the Central Event, was a week-long exercise where we had the Central Event, which was our effort, and then we had the Build a Better Block Event by Main Street take place right after that. And so we were able to kind of test some of the ideas that we were coming up with, and it was good to see the feedback, and ultimately, that feedback is what rolled into the recommendations that you'll see here. This is the evening event that we had for the Central Event on the street, on the curb there. You can see citizens interacting with our team and providing feedback in terms of what character they like, or what type of lighting, or landscaping, or any type of improvement for that matter. So we already talked a little bit about this, so I don't need to recap that, but we did reach a lot of people in terms of the media, both print and digital. And then, secondly, we, in the spring, as I mentioned, came back. We did have a specific business roundtable discussion, which was, we set up shop on between -- on Central Avenue, on the 1700 block. We invited the business owners in to sit down, and the primary things that came out was the one-way to two-way potential conversion, parking, truck traffic, and costs. And ultimately, this is a vision, and so we were, you know, we're still up here. We're not into the nitty-gritty details of a preliminary design, and so some of these things are still unknowns at this point in time as well. And so I'll show you the plan here in a moment, but you can see how the respondents, what their priorities were. And so we asked people if they live in the Washington Neighborhood or not. We had a brief survey, and then we polled -- anybody could come, but we wanted to make sure that we understood what the people in the neighborhood liked. And you can see here that generally, there was alignment between the general public and Washington Neighborhood residents, but I would say that trees and landscaping and beautification in that matter were a top priority, followed by, you can see, lighting, and then also covered transit stops. So the strategy that was -- that we developed along the way that guided this plan was, number one, we want to make sure that we embrace the Washington Neighborhood, the people that live and work and call this corridor home. We wanted to make sure that we heard from them early and often. Two, focusing on the street and the character of the street and making sure that we're pedestrian-focused. Number three, we didn't want to lock ourselves into a one-way scheme, so we wanted to make sure that this vision worked for both a one-way traffic pattern and a two-way traffic pattern. Number four, integrating arts and culture. We wanted to have a sense of place, and so you'll see that the development of the plan includes, you know, character-y developing components that are reminiscent of the architectural character within the corridor, which is quite significant, and that was one of the key things as well. Greening it up, making sure that we don't forget about maintenance. Ultimately, this was an economic development master plan, and we wanted to see if we could find a way to improve the viability of having a business within the corridor, and so that was a big thing. And then safety. Ultimately, I think safety, you could say, was probably lighting was what most people, I think, were getting at their analysis. So we looked at all of the connections within the corridor and the adjacencies, and whether they were parks, or community services, or landmarks. How can this street tie all of that together, focusing on that pedestrian experience? We did take a look at the use, the demographics within the corridor, and I will say that it is the highest percentage of car-free households within Dubuque reside within this study area. The highest, or ranking near the highest percentage of youth per square mile is within this area. A significant number of senior citizens on the north end, and then very high in terms of its ranking or standing, actually the highest within the community for disabled. And so when we think about creating a street that is for all people, we need to make sure that we're thinking about how people move through the corridor, whether it's by foot, by vehicle, and how they can get from point A to point B as it is safe experience. And so these were all guiding elements that kind of helped us frame this vision. So the vision itself, I mentioned earlier that we wanted to create a place that was reminiscent of the Central Avenue architecture, and so we photographed that, and our team used these images to help guide the development of some of the, whether it be bollards, or some of the traffic control features, or maybe even banners, different ways in which we can make sure that this street feels like it's part of the neighborhood and part of the Dubuque fabric. And you can see some of the details here that you'll see in a moment, kind of show back up within the proposed framework that would be used to guide the implementation of the project. This is the proposed typical streetscape section, and I would note that we worked closely with WHKS on a very high level to use your traffic volume data to test out to see if trucks can maneuver through the proposed vision. That was very important, but then also, can we create a more pedestrian-friendly street? So right now, you know, the sidewalks are about, you know, nine, eight to nine feet in width. You'll see that we're adding about, you know, four to five feet to the overall width of that streetscape, which does reduce the lane width, the drive width. Still providing parking in most areas where we can, unless there is a left-hand turn that's needed, or there are other -- there's so many access points that you can't park in between all of those drives. So the proposed streetscape fabric, which is really the design guidelines, which is what, you know, the public weighed in on multiple times, was using decorative benches, potentially creating some markers or some artwork that is reminiscent of the existing buildings. Of course, Dubuque is known for its limestone and its beautiful brick streets, and so reminiscent of that. Covered transit stops, integrating technology. And again, this is a vision. This is something that is going to evolve as you move forward, and so would have to be evaluated in the next phase of design, which would be, you know, your preliminary design phase. So this is one illustration that's taken at 19th and Central. So this is the curve right back here, and you're -- we're looking southbound. You can see how we would have places for buses to pull over and to allow people to safely get off or get on, having covered transit stops. In the background here, you can see this idea of a plaza that emerged, and I think a lot of people that came to our public input session on that half-block realized that, you know, maybe this portion of the street wants to be more pedestrian-centric than automobile-centric, and it creates this gathering space that is for the people within this area. You also see a few components related to screening, so when you drive down the street, you don't just see automobiles everywhere. There's some -- it could be architectural, or it could be landscaping, street trees, lighting, all of those components that we heard about from the public. Here's a view, an aerial perspective. Here's Prescott Elementary, and so we're looking down. This is 12th, and then this is Central. And you can see here showing that we'd have some bumpouts that would reduce the width of the street and how long it takes for somebody to cross from one side to the other. So instead of having to go the full width, you now shrink it down to about 24 feet. So you're going from, you know, if you add eight feet on each side, you know, eight, 32, that's about 40 feet down to 24 feet. So the amount of time it takes somebody to cross is reduced almost by half. It also does slow vehicles down and create a little bit more friction as you move through the corridor. We won't go through all the details, and we can certainly come back to this as you have questions. Actually, let me go back one. So street trees and ornamental plantings, pretty straightforward landscaping. You'll see on the map pedestrian lighting that's proposed, benches, bike racks. One comment, you know, that we received is, why aren't there bike lanes on this street? And we evaluated that based on alternative bike routes that might parallel the street. And of course, you know, you're trying to weigh the amount of traffic that's on the street and who this is for. And most people that are in this, in the neighborhood, aren't necessarily cyclists who are commuting to work every day. They actually are more reliant upon, they need bicycle facilities to anchor their bike in front of a business and whatnot, and it's how they get around. And so they don't feel necessarily safe on the street, but they need to use their vehicle to get from one point to the other. So when we balanced all those factors, it just didn't seem to make sense, but that's something that, you know, will probably come back up. And as you think about a complete streets policy, maybe it needs to be revisited. The urban edge is shown in yellow, and that's just more of a gesture to identify that here's an area that maybe there's some driveways that could be consolidated, so you don't have three cars trying to take a right turn at one spot. Maybe there's an opportunity to condense that. On-street parking is shown in blue. Transit stops are shown by way of this. So starting at 22nd Street, right here, there's a signal there, and as we make our way south, you can see that we had to provide a left-turn lane here for the amount of traffic that comes off of White and goes this way. Ultimately, for this half-block, there would not be any parking along the street, and then parking would start right here. As we make our way from 21st to 20th, you can see, you'll see in this plan, there's kind of this cadence of traffic signal, no, and then there'll be two blocks, another traffic signal, another two blocks, traffic signal. We want to be efficient and moving vehicles through here, but we don't want to be so efficient that you can't cross the street. And so that, it's not unlike almost what you have right now out there. And so there wouldn't necessarily be a huge change with what we're showing here, but again, this is pretty high level at this point and needs further study from a preliminary design standpoint. As we make our way to 19th Street and 18th Street, you can see that we did receive a lot of feedback early on in the project. At one point in time, we weren't showing parking here. We have updated it to show parking, and that came out of the public input sessions. Parking has always been a challenge or a concern, I should say, of the business owners, and so parking does great things in terms of creating friction within the corridor. You know, the more cars you have along the street, the slower automobiles will move. But also, it's challenging to maneuver a larger vehicle through the corridor where there's cars parked, and you need more room to maneuver the rear axles of larger vehicles. And so there's a balance, and that needs to be evaluated when you get into that preliminary phase. The central kind of area where the corridor shifts, here's engine house number one. This is where we are showing this convertible street. So you'd still have access to vehicles in here. This is Key City Creative, and then we'd have this corridor where emergency vehicles could get in and out of. They would ultimately have to drive over the curb, but it -- so it wouldn't be for everyday use, but there would be emergency vehicles would be able to get through there. One of the things that we thought of was this, creating this iconic experience that could anchor this corridor, and this would be something that, you know, we heard from the residents that, you know, they wanted this common space, this social space to connect. And so having that kind of place-making, that identifier, that people captures their imagination and they won't forget as they drive through here, creates an opportunity for that, and it's, it actually kind of balances that historic, that perspective that so few people actually see, because right now, you know, not many people look back, but you have a beautiful building here in Firehouse number one that this kind of balances. And so you can see over here, this is where we're talking about that convertible street and that common space. Here's a look at, an illustration of what that might look like. And then ultimately, so 17th Street, we'll keep going here. 17th Street is on the left side of the screen, all the way down to 15th Street. Generally speaking, not many changes in terms of parking, if any changes. 15th down to 14th, you can see that we're proposing some architectural screening in some areas. You know, the city did a great job with screening the parking lot on Central Avenue, right outside City Hall with the black fencing and the landscaping, and so when we talk screening, that's what we're getting at, is we want something that defines that edge, and it doesn't allow vehicles to kind of crisscross over the right-of-way wherever they want, even though there might be a curb there. We've all likely seen circumstances where people kind of just take advantage of that, and the public right-of-way and the private space tend to blur a bit more without an edge. And sometimes that's good, but when it's a parking lot, it's not necessarily always Few other highlights. You can see the bumpouts. We already talked about that, to kind of slow the distance, or slow the vehicles and reduce the distance in which people have to cross the street. And then ultimately, the project scope ended here on 11th Street. So next steps, this is, this PowerPoint was used on the prior work session, and so our next steps are really here to get your in -- Jill, I think, earlier phrased it as, we want to get your input if there's something that we need to revisit, but ultimately, we'd like to move forward with, at some point in time, coming back with an opportunity to adopt this plan to position you for future funding and whatnot. So I guess I'll stop there, and Jill, I don't know if there's anything else to add, and if not, I guess I'll turn it over to the council for questions.
Okay. Here enough.
Yeah, I think I'm ready for input. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jill. Anyone have any questions for, Mr. Sprank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the biggest thing is I, I'm very excited about this. I hope we can approve this and get this on the, get this ball rolling. The biggest thing I look at is if construction were to start, of course, there's always the impact with businesses. Would we be able to have basically a point person that businesses could communicate with directly, kind of like how we had the B-Branch Communication Specialist? Would we be able to create some position like that where they would, businesses would have a point person to talk to?
Sure. Yeah. Perfect. Yeah, we can do that on a major construction project. Sure.
Perfect. Okay. And I guess what would a proposed timeline be on this if approved?
I would suggest the earliest anything could happen here would be the construction season of 2023, because we won't even be looking at moving the truck traffic off of here until December of 2022. But from a budgetary perspective, I can't answer the question right now, because we're in the midst of doing our budgets. The other thing I would mention is the fact that previously, the council had talked about once the truck traffic came off, doing a traffic study, which would mean that traffic study would be after December of 2022. And so if that traffic study was going to be used for the council to make some decisions, obviously, you couldn't do any construction in the summer of 2023, because none of the decisions would have been made yet. So, but from a practical perspective, the December of 2022 date affects a lot of the timing. Thank you. Ms. Farber?
Hi, Ryan. Thank you very much. It's a great schematic, and the streetscapes look really fun and inviting. Just a couple of questions about your opinion or your thoughts about getting feedback from the businesses and the potential businesses on that corridor of Central Avenue post-COVID, and if there's any new normal consequences because of it, if there's feedback from the residents there now that might be different from when you did it in 18 and 19?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great question. Thank you, Susan. So in our professional experience, we're starting to see much more of an emphasis on how the retail scene uses the street, and whether it's dropping off from, and this isn't necessarily related to COVID, but the rise of Uber or other ride-sharing services is pretty significant. And so how do we think about, you know, temporary signage to allow people to come and go, thinking about how that fits into it, potentially drive-throughs for small restaurants that people don't want to walk in and being able to get in and around? So that's something that you'd want to think about in terms of what this looks like, and so I do think that there may be some merit to having a roundtable discussion with some of the businesses within the corridor, or any of them. I mean, I defer to you to get their feedback. We, you know, met with them early. We've heard from them. Some of them really like it. Some of them, you know, have, still have questions and concerns, and so I think you'll find that throughout this project, that we're going to get input, but I do believe things have changed.
Yeah. In the Rayford Building, for example, Tim has his woodworking creative ways there now, so it's really from White Street all the way to Central now, so that the, I don't know if you've been inside that building, but he's done a really good job of mastercrafting spaces for individuals, and he has over, I think, 60 individuals, or 100 individuals that actually do woodworking there in terms of classes, as well as just people doing it for a vocation or for their own interest. So that would be, I think you had noted, the Rayford Building was a block before on your schematic. Might be interesting to take a look at it again now that he's built that up for that whole block that he purchased.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and thank you.
Anyone else have any comment? Mr. Resnick?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So a lot of great ideas there, obviously, and you've done a lot of great work. Couple of questions. I appreciate the wider sidewalks, but when I was looking through all these other cities and their standards, very often, it was nine-foot was the, was the width for a safe parking space on the street, and you have eight-foot parking spaces. And so safety, of course, is a great concern. You know, there's going to be a driver getting out, and there could be other little ones involved, too. So I'm just curious, I would like to hope that we could have nine-footers as well, and why, I never saw eight-foot. Eight-and-a-half-foot I did see. I'm just wondering why you think eight-foot would be adequate?
I think in, excuse me, in kind of the paradigm shift in thinking about the street and the role of the street, historically speaking, has been thought of as its sole purpose is to move vehicles and to provide a combination for vehicles. And in this kind of new way of thinking in terms of creating a complete street, do you really need nine feet, or can you get by with eight feet? If you have parallel parking, can you park your car close and make sure that there's nothing at the back of curb that your door will hit, you know, so that you can actually take advantage of that space on the back of the curb? And so we use eight quite frequently on streets that are more of a main street where the vehicle speeds are slower, and so we're, the eight-foot is showing this street what it could look like in the future, taking more of a complete streets approach. NACTO is the guide that many complete street policies would follow, and within there, the research that's coming out is suggesting that maybe even seven-and-a-half is actually been something we've been evaluating, and it seems narrow, but it is on the table at this point in time, and kind of the new way of thinking about the role of a street and what's the primary focus.
I see. I hope the complete street is completely safe, of course.
Yes.
So that would be my concern. I mean, I park downtown, and it's very, you know, sometimes a little scary opening the doors or getting in your car as it is. So anyway, I'm hoping that that changes. The other thing is, in your, part of your public spaces, which is an intriguing idea, especially there at the curb, I think that's a great idea. Now, is there, is there going to be a public bathroom there, or are we going to find out if we need a public bathroom with all these public spaces? Because I was looking through that, is, was that part of the plan that I missed?
We have received input regarding public facilities. We've restrooms. We've discussed, you know, potentially partnering with businesses that may be willing to open theirs up. We've talked about some of the other plans within the city along the B-Branch, that there could be public.
be public amenities and recognizing that those types of facilities, you know, are commercial buildings have a pretty significant expense. That conversation needs to be had. And I'm not sure if there's been resolution on it, but it is a, is a good point. Don't have it. We don't have a concrete spot saying it's going to go here. But that service should be evaluated and likely will be needed. And but should be evaluated across the city system, not just within the context of this single project.
Thank you. So of course, when you invite citizens to come, it's, it's nice to have a bathroom. It's welcoming and people see, oh, this is a public spot. There is a public bathroom. You know, great place to gather. So again, thank you very much for your presentation. A lot of great ideas. And I'm hoping that we can even make them better. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks again, Ryan, for coming. I remember this discussion, you know, before 2020, and then also in February 2020 when you came. And I, every time I walked down on Central and spent time down there, I think about some of the pictures that you showed and what these really look like. And you can envision it. And I think it would be, overall, I really do like the plan. I actually want to come back to the traffic study question because I'm wondering, you know, I know that we, we said that we wanted to wait until after the, the traffic moves off of Central entirely, the truck traffic in 2022, which is December. But haven't we already seen a decrease in, in truck traffic in general on Central? I mean, has there been some decrease based on the fact that we don't have the same number of out of town trucks that are coming, you know, just coming through town? Not the local businesses necessarily, but they're taking the off route, right? Aren't they going through the Northwest arterial and the Southwest arterial in some ways?
I could only answer anecdotally that I'm sure that's true, but I don't think we've done any measurements to that effect. Anybody from engineering on the line? Jill, do you know has engineering done any counts there? I don't think we have.
No, not to my knowledge. There haven't been. The idea of doing the traffic study later was that in this coming year, there will be construction along the Northwest arterial. So we didn't think that we would get a true result that people might be avoiding the Northwest arterial in the coming calendar year. And we might be get it, excuse me, get a more accurate reading of what's really happening if we wait until both the Northwest arterial and Southwest arterial are, you know, both up to good state of repair.
That may, and that does make sense. And I, I remember the Northwest arterial was happening, but the timing would not really work very well for doing a traffic study in that case. So we really, I mean, at this point, do we have any options on the table that allow us to move any faster than December 2022? Or are we pretty much stuck with that date? You know, is after that date is when we really get to talk about this in earnest?
Well, I can tell you that the council member who drove the whole discussion around having a traffic study is no longer on the council. So that was that person's idea and that person sold it to the other council members. I, you know, I don't know how the current council feels about it. Maybe the idea is once we have the Northwest arterial improved and we've modified the truck routes in whatever fashion, that decision hasn't been made exactly how that'll be modified, that it, it is going to change enough that you feel comfortable that you can make the improvements. And then there's no reason to wait for a traffic study. But that really has to be, you know, your comfort level with that.
So, I mean, since I held still the floor, I'll go ahead and just start real quick with that. I, I think, I mean, I don't, personally, I don't really envision a scenario where we don't have two way traffic on Central Avenue when this is all said and done. I think what, what I've heard most from people, and I'm, I'm curious, especially Councilmember Sprang, if you, if you agree with this too, you know, in the conversations you have in the third ward. But I've heard a lot of people saying that two way traffic is the way that this needs to go. If we're going to do a pedestrian friendly environment, we're going to have a complete streets type of environment for people. It really does need to be something that produces what I think you refer to as friction, Ryan, you know, the slowing down of traffic to make sure that it's more, more friendly for pedestrians. And I, so I wonder if maybe we do need to wait, or if it is something we can move forward with.
Ms. Mussell, please.
Yes, thank you. Of course, from, from my perspective, one of the things that I was really excited to see was the, the number of trees that, and that people are really concerned because people, I don't think realize the benefits that are going to come from those trees, not only that they're going to look great, but as far as our climate action plan, that's going to be a great asset. I was just kind of curious, on the, the 13 foot sidewalk section, how much of that is dedicated to planting lawn? Just so that we get some idea what kind of size of trees we can plant there.
The, the physical area on the ground, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. So effectively, in our work and what we've been monitoring is you really need about 32 to 36 square feet. Sounds very technical, but that way you can get air, you can get, or oxygen, you can have, you know, healthy soils that can grow trees. Ideally, it'd be more than that. But that's a, you know, maybe it's a four foot by eight foot, you know, box, or maybe it's a little bit narrower and a little bit longer. That's just a rule of thumb. There are other technologies that you can actually, you know, have, they're called Silva cells that allow the roots to kind of extend under the sidewalk and you bridge over them. And so there's different technologies out there. But in general, I would say, you know, 32 to 36 square feet as a minimum per tree would be ideal. Obviously, you know, greening is, the more greening, there's a balance that comes with maintenance and taking care of that. And so, and it also is an urban area. And, you know, so using our experience, we're suggesting that in that range of, of, you know, maybe three trees, four trees per block in that 32 square feet range.
Thank you. And the other comment I have is that I'm glad to see that there's plans for continued conversations with the businesses there. Many of them are long term neighbors. And we want to make sure that we're accommodating their needs as well. So thank you for your great presentation.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Sprang? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming back to Mr. Kavanaugh's thought there, I believe the only way that will actually seriously stop semis from going down Central is to put up some type of barrier, literally. And I like the idea of making the intersections more wider because, one, they're not going to want to run over those. And if we, I don't, I don't, I don't know how a traffic study works in full depth to actually make an opinion to say, well, we should do it with that one. I get the idea. I didn't understand that at the time, that is what's kind of slowing this whole project down because that's kind of unfortunate, but I understand it. What happened, I guess my question to you would be, Mike, if theoretically, the traffic study says, oh, that's a really bad idea to turn Central into two way, then do, does this plan go out the window? Or do we have to go back to contingent, do we have a contingency plan?
Okay, a couple of things here. So your first comment about barriers and trucks, one of the things we have to keep in mind is there's still local deliveries. And so there has to be the ability for trucks to travel in that corridor. Certainly, hopefully not at the volume they do today. I think it would be pretty surprising if a traffic study would show that you shouldn't make the conversion. But I guess that's always a possibility. And I'll leave it to the planning people to tell you whether, what's the contingency if either a traffic study told you not to do it two way, or you just decided it, it's not going to be a two way street, it's going to stay one way.
Thank you, Mike. So just two points. The one way or two way is the plan irrelevant if we don't go to two way traffic? The answer is no. The directive from the beginning was we need to make sure that the vision that we've outlined works for both one way and two way. So that was something that we thought through. The rendering show a two way scheme. But ultimately, the streetscape improvements, the character, the images that you saw conceptually work for both directions, both types of travel schemes. And then, secondly, I guess, what was the, the second question that you, about the planning study in terms of the timeline? Or what was the question?
It really wasn't a question. I think.
More of just an honest comment. I guess I get, I get what you're all saying. I guess we need it, sort of need a traffic study, but I also don't see the need for a traffic study. So that's where I feel on this.
Okay, I, so I think it was, when you do a traffic study, you can ask the questions upfront of, how do we make this scheme work for two way traffic? And the results might yield suggestions that impact the circulation patterns on adjacent streets. It depends on what questions you ask. If you want to prove that, does this work for two way traffic? That's one level of study. Do we want to test it out and, and find out other options that would work for a two way scheme as part of the hypothesis of the study? You can ask that. And ultimately, the intent would be to come up with various solutions. You know, maybe there's a hybrid that we haven't talked about. Maybe there's a portion of this that overlaps that has to stay two way, but then the rest of it is, or stays one way, but then the rest of it goes two way. And so I think, you know, you'd have to set that study up in a way that, you know, will allow you to get various scenarios that you can see the pros and cons of each, what's, what the strengths and weaknesses are of that study and the solutions. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
I, I think we know more than we think we know. I, I think that we know that it has to be a two way street to work. I think that we've all been educated by professionals in, in traffic movement, by professionals in planning that have very credibly made that case. I think that we know that we need to do that for commerce to work. I think we need to do that for pedestrian safety. And so I don't know how much studying we need to do on, on that component of it. We certainly know that, that the area needs a lot of things to start happening. And the sooner we start making some things happen, the better it is. And the other thing that we know from the Millwork District, from some of the things we've done on Schmidt Island, and some of the things we hope to do, is that we kind of have to do our part first to get businesses and investors to step up to do their part second. If the infrastructure is not there, the investors aren't going to be there. The shopkeepers aren't going to be there. The storefronts aren't going to be there. But if the streetscape looks good, like we did in the Millwork District, things will start to pop and things will start to happen. So I share Danny's sense of urgency. This, this is an important project that more than anything needs to begin.
Any other final comments, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Resnick? Yeah, thank you. And so a lot of great comments here. I just want to, would you consider Central to be a main artery of traffic?
And?
North End residents into Dubuque and then other places in Dubuque? I guess I'm wondering if friction and, and, and main arteries don't go together. We've got the whole downtown, there's a lot of friction and we've made sure that it's residential feel in many of those streets. So if we think about, are we going to divert traffic onto what is now really kind of nice streets, combinations, they're downtown streets, but they're absolutely residential and they're, and they're two way. But my question, I don't know about, don't know if we need a traffic study, but right now, people, a lot of people use Central to get in and get through Dubuque. Is that going to change?
I, I think it's, my response would be is, is who do you want the street to serve? Who is your, who is this street for? Is it for the people that live in and along within the Washington neighborhood and first, and then the Dubuque community second, and then those people moving through? Or do you want the street to serve people that are moving through? Because I think it can go either way. Right now, it, it is a thoroughfare, a collector, an arterial that, that moves people through the corridor. The, what was proposed is that the street needs to be designed to accommodate the people that live in and around it and to perhaps reduce the amount of volumes so that the street is safer. And so I think it's really up to the community. And I do believe that the community has suggested to us that they want to see a street that is for the citizens within the Washington neighborhood, those that live in and around it as their street, their main street.
Okay, I, I see it. I know. But it's to me, now, this is not a criticism. It just sounds like wishful thinking that all these people coming down Central, wanting to get to the other side of Dubuque, don't really need to do that anymore. Or somehow, we're going to reduce the traffic just by making things, what's your word, friction, with some friction. So I'm just saying, do we not need a main artery through downtown Dubuque? For all those, for all the North End traffic, I, I mean, I do this a lot, go from the North End to my home. And, you know, generally, I, I go through downtown and then up to, you know, to get to the house. So, so that's still going to be necessary. So do we have a plan for a main artery in downtown Dubuque?
I, I think you can have a two way street or a one way street that has pedestrian centric streetscape, that is a pedestrian centric street that allows trucks and those people moving through to coexist. In downtown La Crosse right now, US Highway 53, State Highway 35, they have one way pairs, very similar to what we have here. The biggest difference between what you see on Central Avenue and what you see in downtown La Crosse, well, two things. One, the retail scene is, is very vibrant, much like lower Maine. But two, the streetscape character is a place where people want to be. And so they have all of the trucks, they have all of the storefronts, they have the same era of buildings, two way pairs. But they are considering going back to two way track, the same conversation they're having right up there. And it's, there's a tight rope to walk. And I think that you do need the connections. We do need to have delivery trucks come through. We do need to have a route, but we can do it in a way that is, instead of it taking 10 minutes, maybe it takes 11 minutes for those people that are moving through. And I think that there's a balance. And that's what we're proposing is that you have that balance. We're not saying no, but we want to make it more pedestrian centric.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Anyone else? Any final comments?
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ryan. That's a great conceptual plan that you have. I'm not going to be here to make any decisions on it, but I'm certainly going to keep an eye on it and maybe provide my input as a citizen. But, you know, it's too bad that we have to wait a year. But certainly, the Northwest arterial has a lot of work that needs to be done. And I can imagine that's going to be one side at a time, I think, when they do that, so extensive. But I think there, there are things that can be done in the interim, you know, that council can look at to, to advise on changes. But I think the plan is exciting. I think it's long overdue. And I'm looking forward to 2023, excuse me, when we can finally see some things really happening down there. So thank you for all your, your work on that.
Thank you for the partnership.
Okay, there will be no further work in the work session. We will stand adjourned.